A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda are the minutes from 14 October.
I move that they be accepted as written.
I'll second that.
You have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Not all in favor? That's three in favor in your abstaining, so we cannot approve the minutes. We'll have to do it again the next time because we don't have a majority vote. Okay, next item on the agenda are the warrants. Okay, we'll start with John. Any question on the warrants?
Uh, nope, I'm all set.
Jim?
No, sir.
Sharon?
Yeah, I have a couple of things. Stu, on the first page, about halfway down, that Atlantic Broom Service, it's just something I've never seen before.
Those are parts for the sweeper.
Okay. And then on page five, at the very bottom, that geo-environmental, is that for the pool?
Yes.
Okay.
In fact, no, I'm sorry. It's actually the wastewater treatment facility. Must have to do with some of the testing that we are required to do by either the Agency of Natural Resources or the Environmental Protection Agency.
Okay. And on page seven, People's United Bank, that's paying down the line of credit for the FEMA, the Irene line?
Is that a big one?
Yes.
One million dollars.
One million.
Yeah, that is the one, yes. That's paying down the Irene line.
All right, and I think this is the last one, on page eight. Pro Electric, is that the installation for the generator, or is that a payment for the generator?
It's a partial payment for the installation, and the other work is done as part of the variable frequency drives, the VFDs. They're not at that particular location, they're elsewhere.
Okay, and on the next page, what is that US bank?
That's probably one of our, a number of our bond payments is what I'm guessing here, let's see. Yes, those are all principal and interest payments for a number of our different bonds.
Okay, thank you, that's it.
Stuart, I'll go back page seven, I'll go to People's United Bank. Was this paid with some of the money we received from FEMA?
Yes, it is. We only pay it down when we receive money from FEMA, so we're not using tax dollars.
So it's not, that was my question, so these are not taxpayer dollars, these are FEMA dollars that we paid?
That's right. That we have received. Just to follow up on that, we have two appeals that are pending. One is, part of the monies here come from one of those project worksheets, but the remainder is being appealed.
Okay. Do I have any citizens out there, I'd like to address the board on any item that is not on the agenda tonight. Would you please come up here to the mic at the end of the table? State your name and why you're here, please.
I'm Nancy Sanford, and I'm here as part of an ADA committee that we have formed in Bennington through Kim and Mike in Burlington. And I handed you a survey that I'd like you to look over for a couple of weeks, and we're, this is something we're thinking as a community of doing.
I'm sorry, say that again?
This is something as a community that we're thinking of doing.
What is it that you're planning to do?
Basically, what it is, is it's a survey that we get, people in the community, church people, seniors, your neighbors, it could be anybody. And it's explained in there, you map out what road or sidewalk you're going to do, and you go ahead, and there's lines in there to say what you see along with pictures, and so to give to you as a tool to help the community have safer roads and sidewalks, is basically what it is. I think the walkabout that was here, I think Dan Monks attended, and Mike Harrington, that's some of the OC Bennington Committee, Organization Committee is involved with, so they can fill you in on what that was about. Couple of things. I went to visit somebody on Park Street the other day, and when I walk long distances, I use my walker. And coming down gage is great, no problems, that's on sidewalks. I walked down in front of the school to the end of the road, and I could not go from line to line on the sidewalk. It was impossible with a walker. It was also impossible for another citizen with groceries, carrying a grocery cart. She could not walk on the sidewalks. We were both in the road, that was our only choice. So, and then I noticed what it was, and what it is, it's the double-lined sidewalks, not the single line, and please-
Hang on, I'm sorry, I don't know what you're talking about when you say double or single-lined sidewalks.
Okay. If supposedly, if you can help me with this, the state will pay for a sidewalk, and they require the double line where there's a gap in between the lines.
Oh, the crack.
And then you walk them in, in cracks, yes. And if the town pays for it, we get the one line. Maybe that's something you can help me with, but-
Okay, so we're talking expansion joints then, is that what we're talking?
Probably, yes.
Okay. So we all understand we're talking, they're called expansion joints.
Okay. If the state is paying that, it's a waste of money because we can't walk on it. That's plain and simple. Or in groceries, I don't know how women with children with carriages are, I'm not familiar with that. So that is something, if you could look into that. Stu, you're going to be meeting with us soon, and maybe you could have an answer or some kind of for us, if that's possible? Thanks. Also, this year, 2014, you had decided to do Bradford Street and Safford Street, correct? And the sidewalks?
We actually postponed those till the next construction season, so they'll be a part of the FY2 2015.
Okay, can I ask why?
Because we were attempting to do the sidewalks and the streets at the same time, and we didn't have sufficient funds to do the streets in FY14.
Okay, so that's another whole year that people can't use Bradford Street to get into town?
Well, it'll be next construction season that we'll begin to work on.
Which is next summer.
Next summer. So I'm coming in January to discuss with you a budget for 2015 roads, so what roads are going to be covered in 2014 and sidewalks?
Most of the roads in 2014 are done. The paving season has pretty much ended. The only sidewalk that we hope to complete in the spring would be Silver Street.
Mm-hmm. That's not the impression that you guys gave me the last two times I was here. I've kept strict notes, but that's neither nor-
What was your impression?
The impression was, is for 2014 Bradford Street and Safford Street were going to be fixed, period. Sidewalks and roads.
No, that's not true.
No, I don't think we ever put that-
I think you misunderstood.
Okay.
But it ties into the, I mean, the construction season runs from April through October, November, so it overlaps two fiscal years. Next construction season is the time that we hope to do both Safford and Bradford, and I can tell you they are in the proposed budget at the present time.
So, coming in January, I'd be too late to go over the 2015 budget with you for roads and sidewalks?
Well, the Select Board will have the budget to review in January, so that's when the public meetings will take place on the Select Board's budget, which is what it becomes when I present it to them. Right now, the department heads are putting together their budgets for a presentation to me.
Is there someone who I can submit? Like, patching was brought up from a couple of other people in the town that it gets patched, but it doesn't get paved. Therefore, it becomes a bigger problem when you snowplow in the roads. So I don't, I'm confused as to when I can present something, some roads, streets, sidewalks, to you for you to really consider being done via my pictures that I've given you in the past on June 24th, and I also have new pictures of Park Street and Main Street. Which brings me into the next thing, is that you guys said you'd do a walkabout with me, and I'd like to, I have two wheelchairs for you to use, and I have four walkers already donated by BPI. And I'd like to kind of make a date with you, tentative date, that we can go for that walk?
Well, I want to make sure, Stuart, we have a priority list of streets and highways we do, we plan out further than two years.
That's correct.
Okay.
You need to see that first.
No.
You're a citizen bringing us concerns on streets that you've seen. We have a list that's been compiled over the years-
Yes.
-that goes out. We only can do so much sidewalk and roadwork.
Right.
We have a priority list. Have you seen that priority list?
No, nobody's offered me that, no.
Okay. She needs to see that before we start seeing-
Yeah.
Yeah, we can do that, or she can submit her concerns directly to the manager's office, and we'll put them into the budget consideration.
Okay, thank you, that would be great.
And then the public hearing for the Select Board, we haven't set the dates yet, but usually it's the first Saturday in the first week of January.
Generally, two or three Saturdays in Jan-
Generally, and we'll publish those dates, and those are open meetings. They'll be in the town office, and you can come there.
And it would be the highway budget?
Yeah, it'll be the highway budget to your concern with. We split it up, and we don't do it all in one day, and sometimes it takes up to three different meetings before we do it.
Right.
So that's when you can present your thing there. Now, as far as the schedule, I remember that night, we had certain members that are not here tonight that volunteered to do that walk-around with you, so why don't you take and give us some dates-
Okay.
-that it's available to you, and we'll pass them on to those board members that choose to go around with you.
Okay. Well, kind of October's pretty shy, I guess. Wednesdays and Fridays, any day.
Okay.
Anytime. And I will have those, the equipment with me, just so you can, you know, people who have unseen disabilities don't really understand it from a person of a seen disability. And so I was just wondering if we could, could I come back in two weeks, and would that be long enough?
For what?
So you would have a date for me to get everything ready?
We'll take and get a message out to the board on the days that are available, see who's available on those days.
Okay.
And you can call Stuart, and he'll tell you the days that the board members are available.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, any other citizens out there I want to address? Joanne?
Sure. Joanne Ernhouse, the Director of the Bennington Area Chamber of Commerce. And I'm just here tonight, right now, it occurred to me in just over two weeks, on November 13th. You're all invited, and I hope everybody knows that we're having the official ribbon cutting for the Bennington Welcome Center. At noon, the Governor will be there with his scissors, and we have refreshments, and I would like to see the whole town come up and celebrate. That's November 13th.
And you will have a Bennington flag that can be displayed inside the center.
I might even be wearing it.
Okay.
Okay?
The lady, Lisa, is that her name?
Lisa Sanchez.
She'll be here tomorrow, I'm meeting her at 1:00. I will give her the flag then.
She's fantastic.
And I thought it was garbage when I heard that somebody in the bureaucracy said, "We can't put a Bennington flag inside the Bennington Welcome Center."
Well, they have a lot of rules and regulations, which luckily Lisa is becoming expert at helping us navigate through them.
This one does not apply.
[laughing]
I will give you the flag at 1:00 tomorrow, okay?
All right, so get, we'll get there and put the flag up, and we'll have a lot of-
And I'll tell the residents, if you haven't seen this Welcome Center, and if you ever had concerns about it being placed in the right place to encourage our visitors to come into Bennington, you need to get out there and look at this thing. And I think the person who designed it and the person who cited it did a great job, and it really-
Yeah, we're very proud.
If I was a visitor to Vermont, and I hit that, at the Welcome Center, the first place I'd want to head is down into Bennington.
Yeah, it makes a wonderful impression.
Which you can see from there.
Really, really beautiful.
It's beautiful.
Okay, everybody, see you there on the 13th.
Yep.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, any other citizens? Okay, as many of you may know, the school, members of the Select Board and members of the school boards in Bennington have been meeting, and I think we've met four times already in the past, based on a study that was done by Dr. Mullins here last year to look at how we can bring things closer together. Tonight, we're going to have the opportunity to hear from the school board presentation on services and demographics, and I'm going to introduce Sean Marie Oller, who is, are you the Chair of the SVSU and Mount Anthony Board?
I am.
Okay. Sean Marie, you want to take it from here, please?
Sure.
And we're going to move, because I guess you're going to use this thing here?
I think there's going to be a PowerPoint.
Is there going to be a PowerPoint? So we'll slide over this way, I guess.
I'm not going to narrate the PowerPoint, though. I'm actually here to thank you for giving us this time. In meeting over the last four months, it's come clear that maybe people in the community and the Select Boards don't have a full understanding of what might happen in the schools. We all hear about, you know, the core subjects that students take, and often the arts and the sports, but there's a lot of student services that take place in our schools, and we aim to work with each child so they can be successful. So Sue is here tonight to introduce Kristen Harrington, and the Superintendent is here to review some of the Bennington school demographics. Is that right, Catherine? Just Bennington? And then we'll have a short presentation, and maybe, you know, you can ask some questions. In the audience tonight are a number of board members from all of our different boards, as well as some of our administrators and clinicians, so that we can answer some questions, and we hope this is helpful to open this communication between the school and the community and the elected town officials, so.
So I see members, Sean Marie, I see members from the Mount Anthony School Board here, I see from SVSU.
Mount Anthony, Shafsbury, Pownell, SVSU, MAU. I don't think there's any, and CDC, the Tech Center, I don't, is there anyone here from Bennington?
Yeah, well, we have a good representation of the school boards here tonight, though, it's really good.
Yes, from all of the towns that feed into the-
Right.
-Mount Anthony School District. So I'm going to introduce Catherine, or Wendy?
All of the districts in the supervisory union offer a wide range of opportunities with much success for our students. However, the programs and services which support students and families in need are less visible, and those are the ones that we'll be highlighting today. I will give a brief overview of three demographic, our enrollments, the free and reduced hot lunch eligibility is an indicator of poverty, and our special education child count by disability, which I've asked Wendy Pierce to review with you this evening. Our enrollments for October 1st by school are here on the first slide. Our total enrollment is currently at 2,872.
Excuse me, Catherine.
Yes.
Can you go ahead, cameraman? Can you put it on the slide? Can you see that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, great. So our current total enrollment is, as of October 1st, is 2,872 for the entire supervisory union. That does include the Public School District of North Bennington, even though they tuition out, there are 121 students, so that total does include those students, even though they're not listed here on these enrollments. Already, our enrollments have shifted, and we have an increase of about 29 students from the beginning of October, will be reported to the boards at their November meetings. So we do a monthly enrollment report to them. And in Bennington, although, let me say, although throughout the SVSU, we're seeing a decline in total number of students as throughout the state, we are seeing an increase in Bennington in our kindergarten students over the last two years. That's something to keep in mind. As I move to the next slide, which shows the increase of students eligible from applications for free and reduced hot lunch from 2008 to our current year, we must remember that the figures rise in part from the challenging economic times we have faced as a community and nation. Often, when we talk about the impact of poverty, especially intergenerational poverty, and what it, and the impact it has on student achievement, we hear such comments as poverty is used as an excuse for poor student achievement. We certainly all know of individual students from such backgrounds who have been successful, but we also know from experience and from research that most children raised in poverty come to school with fewer words in their vocabulary, fewer wide experiences with their families, and fewer verbal interactions with adults than their peers. These disadvantages are real, and have driven the work of Early Childhood Education Director Karen Brunel and others to expand our community public preschool programs under Act 62. Last year, Bennington, in receipt of substantial philanthropic funding and local funding, began including four-year-olds in Act 62 programming, and now have 174 four-year-olds enrolled. This year, Woodford and Pownell have also begun programs. Shafsbury and North Bennington were the first districts several years ago to begin Act 62 partner programs. Our total students in preschool programming this year are 208. This number will change throughout the years developmental screenings are held, and previously identified special needs students are transferred to the public system when they turn three years of age. As we follow these students through stronger transitions to public school, we hope to see an impact on student achievement. Another area of impact is our population of students with special needs. Wendy?
As of October, we had 629-
Glad you could sit down, so you're close to the mic, so people can hear you, please.
As of October, we had a population total of 629. Those include autism spectrum disorder, developmental delay, emotional disturbance, learning impairment, other health impairment, speech and language, specific learning disability, and other, which includes our deaf, blindness, deaf, hard of hearing, multiple disabilities, traumatic brain injury, visual impairment, and other orthopedic impairments. Our early childhood, which is a part of the program that Ms. McClure was just speaking of, has 25 identified students. Didn't know if there's any.
As I introduce Kristen Harrington, please note that our presentation this evening is to give a picture of some of the challenges we face in the public schools, which are a microcosm of our community. All of us care deeply about the opportunities and support for all of our students. The supports and programming in the MAU portion of this presentation are available for all of our students as needed. Kristen?
Okay, so thank you. I'm really excited for this opportunity to talk with everybody about student services at MAU. While I work at Mount Anthony High School, I am going to include information about our middle school as well. I envision this more as a discussion than a presentation, so I'm comfortable if, as I go along, if you have questions or comments, to please make that known as we go along, okay? It doesn't, we don't have to wait till the end. And I'm also trying to figure out, you know, where I'm addressing, so, I mean, we're all here because we're interested in the same thing, so I'm going to speak to the room, if that's okay?
That's fine.
Thank you. So when I thought about how to frame this discussion, I thought about how some people in the room are connected to the education community, and many others are not, so I thought it would be helpful to give a framework about why we meet student needs beyond the academic instruction in the classroom. Then I decided to share some information from our Youth Risk Behavior Survey to give you a sense of what our kids tell us about their lives, and then to share with you what some of the student services look like. So in education, schools are expected to ensure success for all students in the general education environment. We have to, if, as you look down, have a comprehensive system of education that will result to the extent appropriate in all students succeeding in the general education environment. So that's the bottom-line goal and expectation. So in order to do that, we have to make sure that kids are ready to learn, that they're able to participate in their learning, and oftentimes, there are many things that get in the way of our students being able to participate in their learning. There's also an expectation on schools that we have an educational support system and an educational support team. So beyond having quality teachers who can instruct in the classroom and engage them, we're also required to have this support system that keeps kids participating in general education and provides the supports that they need regardless of any eligibility for categorical programs you see under number three. So that means whether you're a regular ed student, a special ed student, a student with other disabilities, which offers you, provides you protections through the ADA, regardless of what category you do or don't fit in, public schools are required to make sure that you have what you need to participate in your education and be successful at it. I saw this quote, and I thought it was a good one, I wanted to share it with you. "School systems are not responsible for meeting every need of their students, but when the need directly affects learning, the school must meet the challenge." And so when you think about what the mandates and the expectations are, and our true commitment to make sure that all kids in our community learn, when there are needs that could present a barrier to learning, we have to figure out how to meet that need so students can attend school, be in the classroom, and participate in their learning. So every two years, the students in our community from grades six through 12, and the sixth graders, I think it's only the sixth graders who, the Bennington sixth graders, every two years, we participate in the Youth Risk Behavior Survey. The data I'm going to share with you today is from the 2011. Our students did take the survey in 2013. There was a delay from the Department of Health in getting those results back to us. Typically, we get them in September, we're going to get them in November. So if people are interested and you want updated data, I'll be happy to provide that. And it's also available publicly on the Vermont Department of Health website to anybody who's interested. But people often ask me, what is the Youth Risk Behavior Survey? Is it reliable? Do kids tell the truth? The survey was developed by the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. It measures the prevalence of behaviors that contribute to the leading cause of death, disease, and injury. We often think about it as the risky behaviors that kids engage in. There's also a section in the survey about their strengths and assets. The Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, this is the gold standard of surveys. We direct our teachers to administer the survey, very scripted, based on the directions we get from the CDC about administering it. There has internal reliability and validity. It's, while it may not be perfect data, it's the best data that we get about what our kids are doing. And we don't see, year to year, or every two years, we don't see wide shifts and variability in what kids are reporting, so it's another indication that it's good data. An important piece about it is, it tells us what kids are doing, it doesn't tell us why. So it, you know, we can use it to know what they're doing, but then we have to really think through and talk- think through and talk with each other and with our kids about different programs that we do that might make a shift in what the behaviors look like. So, in 2011, 804 of the high school students participated and 542 of the middle school students participated. I picked out, the survey is extensive. It covers nutrition, wearing a helmet when you ride your bike. For our discussion today, I chose to cover information regarding students' mental health and behavioral health and their substance-using behavior. So, this data is middle school specific, and it's, it comes from the personal safety section of the survey. The students were asked if they ever seriously thought about killing themselves, if they ever made a suicide plan, or if they ever attempted suicide. The data gives us a percentage. I went ahead and based on the number of students who participated by grade because they give us that breakout, I went ahead and identified how many students does that really mean? Because to me, you know, we're talking about each individual student having a right to come to school and be supported to participate in their learning. So, I'd like to think about it in terms of who each of those kids might be.
What is the total population of the middle school?
You know that, Sue?
Five seventy-three, I think.
So, when we look at kids thinking about wanting to die, thinking about a suicide plan, or actually saying to us, yes, I've tried to kill myself. If we look at all of the "all" column, 20% of them, or 108 students in the middle school in 2011 seriously thought about killing themselves. 12% or 65 made a plan. 7% or 38 of them actually attempted. You can imagine that having thoughts about not wanting to live is a serious barrier to success in the classroom. It is hard to be motivated and able to participate and engage with your peers and your teacher if you're not even sure you want to live anymore. Any questions or comments?
Did you ask the question, why? I mean, is it because of bullying? Is it because of something they've seen on the internet? Do you have any indication, you know, what are the risk factors out there that would cause them to, for 38 students actually attempting suicide?
Yeah. It's a great question, and I think within this, within this survey, they don't ask the question why. And I think suicide is a complicated issue, and there are many factors that impact somebody's thought process about that. And probably for each of those 38 kids who attempted, there's a myriad of reasons why. But that question is part of what the student service professionals in our schools and our teachers are all trying to pay attention to and learn and figure out. Yep.
When you receive these from the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention?
Michael, I'm sorry. Mike, people are going to want to ask your question. Can you come up here? People want to hear, at home, going to want to hear your question. Yeah. You want to come up here and talk into this mic? I'm sorry, this is a little discombobulated, but this is important. The community hears what's going on.
Michael Keen, North Bennington. When you receive these statistics back, and they are very serious, obviously, do you receive some sort of overlay that compares those statistics to statistics of similar school systems in other localities? What do they show?
Yep. Another great question. Sure. The, there is a Vermont State report, which they do a compilation of schools and they do a statistical magic. I'm not a statistician. I don't totally understand it, but it's not averaging all of the state. They take representative samples. So, there's a state report. I didn't bring state data with me. In the past, the Department of Health has strongly cautioned us against comparing one school's data to another school's data. And they have said that we really should be looking at our snapshot of what our kids tell us. They even in the past have cautioned us against comparing like 2009 to 2011. What I'm hearing, part of why the 2013 data is late, is the way they're compiling the information. We're supposed to be able to compare year to year better now than we have in the past.
I have a question. I'm assuming this is an anonymous survey.
Yes. Yep, absolutely.
So, is there any way to follow up with the kids that have actually attempted the suicide? Are they, do they have counselors?
Yep. So, and that, I'm going to hold my response to that because, well, and I'm glad you asked the question, because later in our discussion, I'm going to highlight what the difference student services look like. And absolutely, in both the middle school and high school and our elementary schools, there are people in the building paying attention and doing the very best we can to know who every single one of those kids are. And that's part of, do we? No. You know, do we every day make a really hard effort to make sure that we're noticing the differences that kids are presenting with? Absolutely. And that's, that's what we're expecting of all of our faculty regardless of what your role is in the school building.
I have a related question. Sharon was asking, and I may be jumping ahead a little bit, but 20%, boy, that's a big number.
Yeah.
108 kids, so my question to you, and it has to do with substance abuse as well, is what, what are you doing in the classroom to talk about these things? I remember as a kid growing up here in Bennington myself, they started with substance abuse education in high school, and frankly, that was too late.
Yeah.
It's got to start in grade school.
Yep. Well, I'm not sure in the grade schools what's happening. I can tell you that in, at the middle school, the student assistance counselor partnered with the school resource officer teaches an evidence-based curriculum in the seventh grade called Project Alert.
That's too late.
And every single student is exposed to that curriculum.
That's too late. You've got to start even earlier.
So, let's move on because there's other, so here's.
Sorry. Just so you know, in fourth grade, I was taking the DARE program. So, they were starting earlier in terms of substance abuse, and I think this topic was also covered. So, they are starting earlier.
Is that still carried on though now currently?
Again, I'm not as familiar with what the prevention programming is at our elementary level, so I don't want to answer and be incorrect.
No, the DARE program is not carried on any longer.
Is anything happening, Stu?
I don't know. DARE is not carried on here.
Yeah.
Joe Catherine, we do have comprehensive.
You have to come to the mic.
We do have comprehensive health instruction for the older students.
Older students, not younger?
Well, upper elementary, so that would be the fourth and fifth. I have to go check on where we are with the third and the younger because we're primarily emphasizing now at the younger, youngest grades, the reading, math, social studies.
Yeah, I think to pressure you, but can you be more specific when you?
Not tonight, but I can get that information for you. I can be very specific, but I would have to check with the teachers in the curriculum.
So, this is the similar data at the high school level. They do ask different types of questions, but in the same category of area of risk. So, at the high school level, they add a question about self-injurious behavior. That's what the first one is in reference to. They also add this other question about felt sad or hopeless almost every day for two weeks or more in a row in the past 12 months. What's important about that is that's a significant symptom of depression. So, when we, it's not, not every person who answers that positively is a depressed person, but it is a significant symptom of that. So, and then you'll see there's the suicide data below that made a plan or an attempt at the bottom. So, when we look at the high school population, we have 24% of kids in a two-week period in the past year who reported having a significant symptom of depression. Again, if you're really struggling with thoughts and feelings of being really sad and hopeless, it's hard to come to math class or English class really energetically excited and able to be engaged in your learning.
So, my thought on that would be if I was a teacher in front of the classroom, that I could identify with the students. So, I should be able to verify how close that percentage is. I mean, I'm sitting there, I don't know what our student/teacher ratio is now. I imagine it varies from probably 10 to 20, somewhere in that area. But I would think that the teacher should be able to identify for two weeks, somebody feeling depressed, you should be able to pick that right up. So, do we have counseling? Would we identify these folks? Should we send them somewhere after that?
Yep. And you'll, you'll see that later. And is it Mr. Krosick? Is that right? So, you know, your point is, is really important in that while teachers are preparing their lesson plans and, you know, they're in front of a room of however many kids delivering curriculum and assessing individual learning, we're also asking them to pay attention to who in the room might be depressed, who in the room might be showing up with cuts on their arms that look like they maybe weren't accidental. So, it's, every one of us has multiple responsibilities throughout the day from teaching to student safety and student identification. Okay, so we can go. I pulled this again, it's in the student safety section. They only ask this at the high school level, but it has to do with dating violence and sexual abuse. 9% of our high school students report that they've been hit, slapped, or physically hurt on purpose by a boyfriend or girlfriend in the past 12 months. So, you know, as I look around the room, I imagine most of us can remember the importance of dating, who liked who, who's, you know, caring about who, who fits in with who during our high school years. In some of those relationships, we have abuse behavior happening. And again, if that happened to you at, you know, let's say it happened at lunchtime and somebody didn't see it, going to your next class is going to be a real challenge. Or if you had a big blow-up with your partner the night before and you're still carrying that over into the next day, these are real issues that are young people. Or if I'm the best friend of somebody and I know that her boyfriend has hit her and she made me promise not to tell anybody, and I'm holding that secret. You know, these are real, serious things that present for kids in the classroom. And the sex abuse issue, this question is, is specific to being forced to have sexual intercourse. It's not about kids who are touched inappropriately or all the other ways that kids are abused. It's a one very specific piece of information. It's a real problem for kids in our community. And you'll see that there are those of us in the school buildings who are working with other agencies and organizations in town to support those kids. But again, if you're currently involved in the legal system because you found the courage to tell, and now the person who abused you is being tried in court, you know, those kids are still trying to come to school and do math while they're thinking about their testimony coming up. And we have to support that if we're going to ensure that every single one of those kids participates in their learning and is successful. Okay. So, then we move into the substance use. I chose for each cigarettes, alcohol, marijuana, and prescription pills. Again, we can see, and there were some comments made, you know, the substance use starts early. The asterisks in the grade six, the sample that responded positively was too small to be identified. It means it was less than five kids. So, that's why the asterisks are in those columns. But we can see, you know, starting in seventh grade, we have kids drinking alcohol and smoking marijuana, and then the prescription use started there in the eighth grade. Go on. Yep. So, again, I use the same information for high school. What you'll notice is that where kids, what they report in the ninth grade across substances And again, the question, I included the data about, just used it at all in the past 30 days. So, for some of those kids, it may have been it was their first time trying something. For some of those kids, they may have a full-blown substance use problem, and that's a regular part of their life. Yes, sir? I think you need to come to the microphone.
Hi. I'm just curious. Ronald Conroy. I'm just curious, this past May, Governor Shumlin decriminalized marijuana. Do you expect these numbers to go up?
So, our legislature did decriminalize it, and I want to, I want to make sure that people understand that it was not, marijuana was not legalized. It's no longer a criminal violation. It's a civil violation. And it's too early to say what will happen as a result of that. And certainly in this political climate, there's a lot of discussion about what to do about the marijuana issue. So, what, what we'll see, I don't know. I know those of us who work in prevention are continuing to think about how do we help kids to make healthy choices for them, given that they may not fully understand what the difference is. And just because something is decriminalized doesn't mean it's healthy for you to do it. Okay?
Do you track that 2010, 2009, and see if it's getting better or worse over the years?
The numbers tend to stay around the same.
Excuse me?
Yes, sir.
Ed? Ed, microphone. Let the people see who's talking here.
Senator Luternow, where did these numbers come from? Because I've noticed in many instances here that they, you have a male and a female column, and then if you go over to the far left where it says "all," the numbers don't match, and I don't understand that.
Yep. Some of that is because when, when I took the percentages and then figured out what it meant, remember, the report comes in percentages, and we know how many, what the "all" number is, and I know what the breakout of each grade. When I did the math, I got some decimals, and I rounded up and rounded down. Okay? So, that's where, why across, you won't see the exact number equaling out.
Can I ask a question?
Of course.
Mike, is it yourself?
Mike, one, I'm shocked at the numbers. I hope most people in here are shocked too. But I want to know, do the students need parent consent to do this survey?
Yeah. Another great question. They, they do. And again, that's part of, I believe it happened with the No Child Left Behind Act. There was a Pupil Privacy Act piece, and no public school is allowed to ask their students certain questions in categories. Substance use is one of the categories. So, the way that's, public schools do this, we mail a letter home, we identify the date we're doing it, and we ask parents to opt their child out if they don't want them to participate. And each time we administer it, we get a handful of kids in our community that their parents choose not to have them participate.
Did the students also sign this form or was it anonymous?
No. The opt-out form of the survey.
No, 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 the survey.
No, there's absolutely no identifying information on the survey, personal identifying information. They fill in a bubble about their grade and their gender.
So, the students could have just done this, not that they did, but say this is a law. Because I'm amazed, when you went on to the ninth grade, in all of the statistics about using cigarettes, using marijuana, using alcohol, that is a criminal thing for anybody to supply alcohol. to supply alcohol, never mind the rest of the stuff to students. So the problem isn't just that the students have this whatever, we've got people out there that are not watching their minor children.
As a community, we all have a responsibility and a piece of this, absolutely.
I want to just break in, Michael, you just brought up the point why the Select Board, myself, and the rest of us feel it's important to have this meeting with the school people here. We're hearing things tonight that, I mean, you're picking up, you're shocked. If you're shocked at some of this stuff, there's a lot of people in Bennington that are shocked when they see these numbers. And it's important that we all, as a community, wrap our arms around these things you see here. And it's this kind of thing, I think Dr. Mullins pointed out to us when he was here doing the survey, how important it was for the legislative body of your town to get together with your school board officials to do these kind of things, and this is one of the goals we're working on.
But I think you also bring up that this isn't just a school problem then.
Absolutely.
It is us as a society's problem in this little town, that hopefully we can do something to help it.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay, Sue, so now, you know, on the brighter side, this is what we do about it. So student services at the high school, let me go back and say, when we talked about at the beginning, the education support system, schools are required to have supports that cover a wide range of needs. So within the education support system, there's academic things, there's things to help around college and career readiness. Tonight, I'm specifically focusing on issues around mental health, student safety, substance use, that's my area of expertise, that's what I was asked to come and talk with you about. So I want to be clear that that's, this is a piece of the larger education support system that happens at school. So at the high school, we have a school-based health clinic, and some of these, I'm going to give you some more detail about, some I'm just going to highlight. We have a school-based health clinic, a student assistance counselor, school-based clinicians, and a school social worker, contracted service psychologist. That means that it's a contracted service, it's one person who comes in to provide a service for us. Our Sunrise Opportunities Program is a partnership, it's an education program for our pregnant and parenting teens.
Excuse me, Sue, you want to answer this, you're getting the answer, but the first five things, are these things that are conducted in that student center that we built over there, the high school?
Yes, most of them, not Sunrise, that's over at Sunrise.
Right, right.
But yes, the rest are...
And a student can walk in anytime to get this?
And Kristen will explain how it is.
Yep. The Center for Restorative Justice, we partner with, and then there's other community agencies, you'll see there that we have very positive, ongoing working relationships to help address some of these problems. That includes the Department for Children and Families, United Counseling Service, our private practicing therapists in town, and the primary care doctors. Yep. So likewise, at the middle school, they also have their own comprehensive system of support. They also have a student assistance counselor, they have school-based counseling with community therapists that they welcome into their school, partner with the Center for Restorative Justice, behavior intervention specialists, and again, they partner with the same agencies that we do.
When did all these programs start?
Oh my goodness. They've been building over time. I started at Mount Anthony High School in 2004, and many of those relationships were already in place at that time. So I don't know, Sue, if you want to add anything to that?
Well, when we started the community school and we did a grant through the town to renovate one of the back buildings so we could provide a lot of these services, when I first got there, uses here, there were two school-based clinicians?
One, where?
Okay, and now there's four.
And I know the Bennington community, I believe was the first high school in the state back in the late eighties to support a student assistance counselor in their school, and we have consistently had one since then. But the need has grown and the programs have grown.
The clinic started about nine years ago with a doctor that comes once a week.
So we have a local physician who comes to campus, we have an actual doctor's office and a nursing area in our student center. She comes to campus once a week for two hours as needed. The school nurse coordinates the health clinic, and in the 2012 and 2013 school year, there were sixty-one school-based health clinic visits. What's important about this is, for various reasons, kids may have difficulty accessing medical care in the community or during the day. If they're able to come see the doctor for their medical need during their school day, they don't lose time for transport, they don't lose time for sitting in the waiting room for their turn, it's a pretty quick turnaround. They come out of class, they see the doctor, they get back to class. And I do have some specifics about, these are the types of things that kids access the school medical care for. There were seventeen visits for smoking cessation, fifteen for acute illness, eleven for physical exam, and eighteen for chronic illness. So it's a wide range.
Can I just say, this is not, if a child has a primary care physician, that's where we want them to go. This is for kids that don't have access.
Well, and let me say a little bit more about that, because you'll see on the next slide that kids do have primary care doctors. You can go to the next one. What it becomes about, too, is the speed in which they're seen and not having to lose classroom instruction time during the day. The doctor, again, we encourage and support all our students to have insurance and to have a medical home in the community. When kids who have a primary care physician are seen at the school clinic, that physician is giving the information back to the primary care physician, there's communication. And there's often a, there's a reason why the appointment happened at the school setting and not at their medical home. Again, we want to, we want to bridge the gap in service, we want to make accessing care fast and easy, and not have it deter from instruction time as much as possible.
I'm going to ask this question, but maybe you can't answer it, but I'm trying to take a look at health insurance, health access for the entire community. We have a free clinic, but they will not see anyone under eighteen, is that correct?
Correct, that's correct.
So that load is going to be falling on the schools, is what you're telling me?
Right, yep. Well, and too, for some of those eleven students who don't have a primary care physician or health insurance, that may be because they are foreign exchange students, and this is how they access medical care while they're here. And then there are others that, for various reasons, they don't have a medical home yet, and they don't have insurance. Both schools have student assistance counselors, there's a full-time one at the middle school, and we have a part-time one at the high school, both of them are master's-level social workers. In both buildings, the student assistance counselor provides prevention and early intervention. That looks like screening for mental health and substance use problem and making appropriate referrals for treatment, prevention curriculum, classroom presentations, running the schoolwide prevention activities, education groups, individual counseling, and as a resource to parents, teachers, other educators. At the middle school, the student assistance counselor there provided services to one hundred and fifty-seven students in the last school year, and at the high school, it was services to thirty-two students. Also at our middle school, the school counselors at the middle school do a lot of intervention around social skills and some emotional support during lunch groups. Ninety-three students participated in school counseling-run groups, those are your, what some of you probably remember calling your guidance counselor, now they're called school counselors, they run that at the middle school. The middle school also welcomes seven different private practicing or UCS therapists in the community, they allow them into their school to see their clients during the school day on campus, again, to increase access to service. At the high school, we have four licensed clinical social workers on campus full-time, one of them is also a certified alcohol and drug abuse counselor. And I say school-based clinician, school social worker, because based on our job titles and what our assignments are, there's a different entitlement. We all provide mental health and substance abuse counseling, case management and crisis intervention services to our kids. We play a significant role in removing barriers to learning and supporting students to participate in their education. Again, when those mental health problems are presenting or substance use problems, we are on the school campus, we are a living, breathing part, kids, we have relationship with kids for lots of different reasons. It makes it very normalizing for kids to come work with us because we're just that other lady at school, and they're comfortable with us. There's, for some kids, it's, they feel a real sense of stigma and fear around going to a therapist in the community, and they say, "I'm not doing that," but, "Oh no, but I'll talk to that lady at school, that's fine." And we also collaborate with educators, families, and other professionals around managing positive, pro-social, good mental health practices in the school building. In the 2012, 2013 school year, we served two hundred and four kids at the high school. So far this school year, we're already up to a hundred and forty-eight kids. That's a bit concerning and alarming. What we're noticing is the need is increasing, but also as a clinical team, we're noticing that the intensity that, of need that's being presented is greater.
Intensity by what?
Meaning the level of problem that kids are presenting with. So it's, you know, in the mental health world, things like depression and anxiety are pretty typical and common. Very serious suicidal thinking is intense. So the number of kids already this school year that that's been a presenting problem, or kids presenting with maybe more serious mental health problems, including what we call in the mental health field psychotic symptoms, things of that nature.
Is there a common factor in when you speak of the intensity and the desire to commit suicide, is there a common factor that they trace it back to, either feeling trouble at home or?
No, really, I think, you know, when we're talking about mental health and suicide, it's very complicated stuff. There's no one reason, if there were, you know, we could have easily fixed it by now. But it's really very complicated. So it takes trained, skilled people to sit with each individual person who's struggling to understand what does that mean for them and their experience, what do we need to do to address that problem? And none of that is quick. You know, that's not a fifteen-minute conversation, and then you have a plan and it's going to, you know, be better in a week. This is, this is long-term, you know, real, real effort work. And it takes partnerships. I mean, one of the beauties, one of the reasons I love working in the school setting is I get to hear lots of things. I get to know, you know, from four different teachers, what does it look like to them? I get to see what it looks like in the lunchroom. I get to hear from a parent what it looked like last night, and I can take all those different pieces of information, put it together, and I have a much more complete picture around what are all the factors, what might be an effective intervention and way to approach this problem. It's one of the benefits of being in the school setting, working on these problems. So both the middle school and the high school have a collaborative relationship with the Center for Restorative Justice. We both do that to offer an alternative to suspension. Again, when you have behavior that is serious enough that the consequence needs to be removal from school, you know, that's a challenge, you're not in the classroom learning. So we have this relationship where we can refer students to CRJ, they use restorative practices, they identify needs the student might have, make referrals to other support services, and instead of an out-of-school suspension, the student and family engages in some other services and corrects the problem. We also, at the middle school, they have a collaborative relationship with CRJ around attendance problems. And if you're not coming to school, you're not learning. And school attendance is a community-wide problem, it starts in elementary school. As a pre-K-12 education community, we're looking at that and trying to understand what all those factors are that cause kids to not show up for school. CRJ has an effective program at the middle school around engaging with kids and their parents or guardians and trying to identify what the barriers are to attend and to remedy that. So last school year, thirty-four kids from the middle school and thirty-five kids from the high school were engaged in programming at CRJ in these partnerships. So I've mentioned some other partnerships, I wanted to highlight these three specifically. Both at the middle school and high school, we have representatives to these organizations or these groups, the Bennington County Multidisciplinary Team for Child Sexual Abuse. I want to also highlight that the Bennington Elementary Schools also have representatives they send to that team. That's a governor and panel team, the meeting is confidential, and we look at the open child sex abuse cases in the county of Bennington and problem-solving case plan, how we're going to make sure that those kids are taken care of. And there are representatives from the schools that attend that meeting. The Bennington County Juvenile Justice Team, again, is looking at issues related to the juvenile justice system, kids who are behaving in delinquent ways in the community or find themselves engaged in the juvenile justice system on probation. Absolutely, there's an impact at school with that, and as, that's not a kid-specific meeting, that's a systems meeting that we look at, how does the juvenile justice system and the education system work together most effectively to support kids to engage in appropriate behavior and law-abiding behavior? And then there's the Southshire Substance Abuse Coalition, it's a longstanding group in this community that looks at how to promote, you know, safe, healthy relationships with substances, how to keep kids from using, how to have adults model healthy behavior, and again, both middle school and high school representatives attend that monthly meeting.
I'd like to add one more partnership on that slide, and that's the Bank of Select Board.
Awesome, nice.
Seriously, that's why we started these meetings, we're meeting every two weeks, and that's why we have you here tonight. There's a lot of information you presented to the board tonight that I think we, as legislative leaders of town, need to make sure we look at our assets, we have things like our police department, our economic development team, everything else, to make sure that we're in sync with what you folks are doing and totally supportive across the board, so.
Well, and I...
I learned a lot from this presentation already tonight that I'm going to need, so thank you.
And please know that anybody can contact me at any time, I'm really passionate about this issue, and I love talking about it, I love problem-solving, how we can meet the needs of kids in our community and have all kids access their education and graduate and have a good life plan for themselves. So please don't ever hesitate to call with a question, comment, or concern, I'd be happy to talk about it.
Thank you, Kristen. Do I have Sean Marie and Catherine, if you want to just go on? Sean Marie?
Catherine, I think wanted to make a few points.
I just had a few closing remarks we have at the elementary schools as well, a lot of the supports that Kristin had shared with you. We have a relationship with CRJ, we actually had anticipated those funds being cut this year, but we were able to secure some grant funding through our Title I to continue our relationship for the elementary schools with CRJ in a similar way that the group works with the middle and high school students. We also have nurses and guidance counselors. We also have nurses and guidance counselors, school counselors in each of the buildings. And in one building at Benell, we have a, a school social worker. We have behavior specialists as well as interventionists. And in our three schools with the chronic highest, chronic absentee and tardiness, we've added community liaisons to work with families. And that's started to really show an impact. After three years, we started with grant funding and now that is also locally funded. I also think that one of the most important things that Kristen shared with you is the importance of relationships. And all of our teachers and specialists and support personnel are on the alert, are looking very closely and observing students every day as well as instructing students. And it's really important to recognize that these relationships are extremely important. We continually try to personalize education and make sure that every student has at least one trusted adult within each school building where they attend, to whom they can approach when they have a problem or a... I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought because I wanted to make sure as I was looking at you, Joe, and you were talking about the legislation. Our legislators and community leaders throughout the state also need to, especially in Bennington County, realize that we need more family and community support in the mental health area. It's not just in the schools that we need that support, both funding and organizationally, but also in the community itself. And that's, that's where I always had it when I was-
There may be help there.
Good.
And I'll put on my other hand is my relationship with the, with the Veterans Home. We're, we're working out a situation now with White River Junction, the VA Hospital there, to get more mental help down here for the veterans. But we could work with our legislators to see if we can broaden that to where it's going to the community, not just the-
Yeah, that would be great. I actually, at one time in my career, was the liaison for the Veterans Hospital of White River and the mental health agencies. So I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
Sean Marie?
So really what I'd like to say is, thank you for letting us come and share some of the things that happen in the schools that are not academically related. This is a community-wide issue. These are all of our kids, this is our community. And I'm gonna put a plug in for a movie that I saw in Bellows Falls that will be here on November 10th called The Hungry Heart. It is a pediatrician that is, that started and is dealing with many young children who are addicts, who started at 13, 14, 15, taking opiates and painkillers. And it's a really phenomenal movie. The Turning Points, I believe, is sponsoring it. I haven't followed up on it, but I did see it myself this weekend. I wanted to make sure that I thought it was appropriate to bring some of the students that, that I work with outside of the school. And it is a huge problem in Vermont. And so we need to take a look at all of these things to help educate and take care of our children. So again, thank you for the time here.
Well, I, I wanna thank you, Sean Marie, Catherine, Sue McGuire, Kristen, and everyone else here, the school board members. You know, I've been involved with the school system in different capacities here in Bennington, but this is the first time I think I've seen this thing pulled together like this to where I, as a, as a member of the Select Board and the community leadership, need to pay attention to certain areas to see what we can help to make sure that our children are not at risk for some of these behavioral things we saw up here. The suicide thing really bothers me when I saw the numbers. You know, ones too many, but when you saw the numbers up here, it's, that's way too many. And I think Mike Bethel said it best, this is a community issue, not just a school issue. So thank you all for putting your time here tonight. And I hope the viewers at home who, who got this information, contact the people both here on the board and also on the different school boards if you have issues or questions because our children are important and their education and, and the well-being of this community, it, it all goes back to our school system. So thanks for everybody coming here tonight.
Okay, we on? Yeah. Okay, I'll call the meeting back to order. Next item on our agenda is the ordinance on the panhandler, improper use of public way and abatement of public nuisance prohibitions. First of all, I'm gonna say that we're not gonna vote on this tonight. As you can see, we're missing three Select Board members, two with illnesses and one who had another engagement out of the area. But we will listen to anybody that wants to talk about it tonight. We will have this on our agenda again at our next meeting, which I believe is November 11th.
It'll be the normal scheduled meeting.
It'll be the normal schedule.
That is Veterans Day, and I don't know whether the board wants to meet that night or not.
Well, let's... Anybody here have any problem with that? I don't. At six o'clock on Monday. No, we'll do it on 11, at six o'clock. Okay. So I'm gonna talk about some changes we've made because of the input we received on our last one on the ordinance. And it's gonna probably be confusing for some of you that don't have this go along, but there was a paragraph at D under 17-3. It read, "Loitering for the purpose of the ordinance shall mean remaining idle in essentially the same public location or upon private property generally accessible to the public." We struck, we struck that entire paragraph, so that's no longer applicable. And then on the second page, we struck, it was, we struck the words in paragraph G, "or soliciting the sale of goods or services." So with that, I'll read that whole paragraph as it should read now. Soliciting shall mean asking for money or objects of value in a public place with the intention that the money or object be transferred at that time and at that place. Soliciting shall include using the spoken, written or printed word, bodily gestures, signs or other means with the purpose of obtaining an immediate donation of money or other things of value. However, this ordinance is not intended to prescribe any activity permitted by the vendor's ordinance or any demand for payment or services rendered or goods delivered, nor is this ordinance or definition of solicitation intended to include or prescribe fixed advertising attached to an existing premise, nor is it to intend to include or prescribe signs or written material allowed under any other applicable town ordinance, regulation or license permit. So what we took out, we added in there activity permitted by the vendor's ordinance, and we took out that "or soliciting for sale of goods or services." And then on page three, under Article 17-4 Prohibitions, Paragraph F, it read, "No person shall allow an animal under his or her control to defecate in any street, sidewalk, park or other public place or private property without the owner's permission unless he or she immediately removes such deposit." We struck, we struck the word "street, sidewalk, park," and all we say here is that "any public place or private property."
So I'll get all that stuff that's already been discussed. We have this at home section.
Okay.
Just medicine, watch out here.
And paragraph G, we've changed that to "any place," all right? So that's the changes in the ordinance. So who would like to speak on this? Judy? Judy, we're gonna ask you to come up, sit at the end of the table, speak into the mic, please.
My name is Judith Pennock. I am a downtown employee and a homeowner. I'm the office manager at Evans', and we've owned a house one block off Main Street since 1980. I liked what Jonah said at the meeting two weeks ago, that this is not what we want Bennington to become. And yes, right now, it's a very small problem. There are very few people doing this, and it's, it's not a large problem yet. But having taught for 31 years, we all know that the time to stop a problem is when it's small. I just wanna share one thing that happened, and then I'm gonna go sit down. I, I wrote a long email, which I sent directly to Joe, and I assume that he shared that. If not, he certainly may do so.
The entire board has seen it.
We're working hard to keep our downtown vital and alive, and a town without a downtown is nothing. And Columbus Day weekend, the, the three October weekends are hands-on, the three busiest weekends of the calendar year for us always. And on Saturday of Columbus Day weekend, I watched a car pull up. There was a parking place. Three women of a certain age, or elderly, as some may say, got out of the car and started their, you know, started looking. They looked up at the store signs and they looked up and down the street, gathering their bearings. And I was just about to go over, I talked to everyone, and I was about to go over and say, "May I help you?" And "anything you're looking for," or whatever. And they were approached by one of our regulars. And they backed away, the three of them, they just shrank back, and they were just shaking their heads and, and, you know, motioning to him. And he did go away. They huddled, and before I could cross the street and get to them, they got back in their car and drove away. We can't afford that even one time. We're clawing for every dollar we make, and those three weekends are when we make more percentage-wise than any other. We can't afford to have that happen at all. And an ordinance, although difficult to enforce, would at least give us something to stand on. I talked to everybody, I also am very outspoken. I will go out and say, "We have an ordinance, you can't be here, go away." And I'll have no problem doing that. So I urge your support and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Judy.
Thanks, Judy.
Any other members of the community? Come on up, state your name, please.
Hi, my name is Ronald Conroy. In response to the proposal, to the proposed additions and/or changes to Article 17, improper use of public way and abatement of public nuisances, I would like to submit the following statement. I find the proposed ordinance to be unconstitutional. Peaceful solicitation of any kind, including panhandling, is a right afforded to all U.S. citizens by the First Amendment of the United States Constitution. The town of Bennington cannot regulate or control what solicitors say or to whom they speak, nor can it put, nor can it put the interests or desires of its business owners and tourists ahead of the constitutional rights of its people. Public places such as malls, plazas, sidewalks, parking lots, buildings, streets and any other public forum are for the use and benefit to all people. The proposed ordinance attempts to create prohibitions on solicitors that already exist in Vermont law books for all people in Vermont. Those laws are found in Title 13 Vermont statutes annotated and include laws of frauds, simple assault, disorderly conduct and reckless endangering another person. Also found in Title 13 is a law which states, "No political subdivision of the state may adopt a law or rule having the force of law that includes being found in an intoxicated condition as one of the elements of the offense giving rise to a criminal or civil penalty." The ordinance also addresses aggressive manner and defines what that means. Most of the definitions listed already addressed by other states, state laws, are unnecessary and redundant. The letter I of the prohibition section of the ordinance, it uses the word "aggressive" to describe soliciting behavior that is unacceptable. But letters J through R do not include this term, leaving those items to apply to all solicitors, aggressive or peaceful. This ordinance also allows for the selective enforcement by police of such an ordinance. For these reasons, this ordinance is unconstitutional. The law must apply to everyone equally. In addition, if the board is suggesting that Article 17-2 of this ordinance allows them to create and enforce ordinances, they're incorrect. This authorization is only effective if the ordinance does not otherwise compromise or violate the Constitution of the United States or other federal laws that apply to the matter being addressed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other citizens like to discuss this? Mike Bethel?
Yeah, last week, the last time you thought about this, I was thinking about it for a couple of weeks, and I says, "Well, what's the fair, balanced way of doing this?" And I think you've come up with it. I think you really have. What Judy just said, there's two sides to this coin. You do have what the gentleman said, the rights of everybody, but you have a downtown district, and it's a taxing district. And a lot of people put a lot of money and effort into that. And what Judy said, which I believe her, that we have people coming on certain special times and weekends to use Bennington and support Bennington, I, I think we do as a, have a right to say we do not want panhandling, or whatever you wanna call it. Will it be tough to enforce? Probably. I think it's gonna get into a whole legal thing if somebody wants to get arrested and go through all that thing and protest it. But I, I think the fairness issue is here, you have the panhandler who's hurting, and there's many programs that they can get help at. And, but what about the businessperson? What about the person that wants to build up the downtown? What about the visitor that wants to come here? Like Judy just said, if that's an example that happened, you know, three old ladies or five old ladies, if they come here and they don't feel safe. But I think what the Select Board also has to do when they pass this is to have more police presence downtown. Because once you enact this, you gotta have some way of backing it up. And I know years ago, we wanted the police to walk around downtown and have a bicycle patrol down there, a walking patrol. And I think you need to do that, too. And especially on the days like Judy's talking about, when we know that there's gonna be a Mayfest or Columbus Day or some of these days, it wouldn't be, I don't think, too much to ask the police to put somebody on at those hours that are pertinent for the shops to stay open. But I, I do support this reluctantly. I, I, I'm not a constitutional lawyer, I'm not a lawyer, and I do hear what the gentleman says over there, but there is a fairness here. And people who spend hours working and putting their life savings into downtown certainly should have some protection from people who are taking advantage of a situation. So thank you, I do support it.
Thank you, Mike. Any other citizens? John Shanahan?
My name's John Shanahan. I'm the director of the Better Bennington Corp. That's the downtown organization. I'd like to start by saying, Stu, thanks for taking Joanna, giving us time, Joanna and me, to address this problem with you and for bringing it to the board. It is a big problem and has been for a long time in downtown, and I can only speak for downtown because that's the, I'm familiar with not only the merchants, I'm familiar with the convenience stores and the shops where the money that's being collected is actually spent because those shops complain as well as the merchants do. And we run the welcome centers, so I hear not only residents' complaints, but visitors' complaints and how they do feel harassed and threatened by people asking them for money. Stu, I know you didn't write this ordinance, you didn't sit down and make it up, you looked at other towns' ordinances that have successfully put them into place, and you took the time to rewrite it so that it, it addresses certain issues in Bennington, being our firemen and our, the Girl Scouts, or people actually trading money for work. And it's just people asking for money. Not only is it detrimental to the downtown community, it's an insult to the organizations that we have in town that provide services to meet all the basic needs of the people that are on the street who are in need. When I said I know the merchants personally, I know the store owners personally, the convenience shops where this money's being spent, I also know some of the panhandlers personally. And, and it, it's commonly known that this majority of this money's not being spent on basic needs. It's being spent on alcohol, cigarettes, lottery tickets, and that comes from personal, personally witnessing this in the convenience shops downtown and talking to the store owners. I know the problem is more widespread than downtown, but it is a serious issue downtown, and I think the ordinance is well-written in the fact that it will give our police department some teeth in enforcing it and taking care of this problem on Main Street.
Okay. Thank you, Jan.
Thank you.
Any other citizens? Any Select Board members? John?
Could I say something? I wasn't here two weeks ago when we first brought this up, but I read through the minutes. I, I've looked at the different articles, and I wanted to try and come up with a positive solution. I didn't take into consideration the, the rights of the people to ask for money. I, I, I understand that we're gonna have an enforcement issue, but that's not a reason to not act on a problem that we're having. And so I, I kept looking for a solution, a different solution that might work for all of us. And I don't, I don't think it's necessarily fair, but I wanted to pose a question to everybody. I, I thought back on my childhood, when my parents used to bring me to a lake, and on that lake, every morning I'd see some ducks go around, around the lake, and they'd stop at different beaches. And I started feeding those ducks, and they kept coming up to the beach. And every morning they came up to the beach, but this was someone's, someone else's property. And so we would leave after our week or however long we spent there, and a new family would come in, maybe they fed the ducks, maybe they didn't. But the owner still had to deal with those ducks. And when they came in, after a year or two of feeding them, we ended up getting notes saying, "Don't feed the ducks." They didn't punish the ducks for coming and asking for food. They wanted, the ducks wanted to eat, you can't blame them. So they came to the people that were handing out the bread or whatever it might have been to feed the ducks that actually brought them in. So my question is, no, we can't necessarily enforce this law. And we, when we do, maybe we're finding people that don't have the money. Let's, let's take into consideration that the only people that are asking for money are the people that need it. Let's, let's push aside the fact that some people don't, or they- or they spend it on the wrong things. But maybe what we could say is that there's a warning system once, twice, and then you get fined if you pay people money, if you hand out money to panhandlers. If we look at it differently and say, "You're at fault for allowing these people to come in and hand out money." Maybe then it gives, it helps us in a couple of ways. One, it gives people an excuse not to hand out money. So they say, "Sorry, I can't. It's against the law." I'm not saying, "Don't help people out." It's been mentioned that there's a number of different systems here where you can donate to different charities. So by all means, do that. And do that with organizations that will make sure that they get proper housing, they get proper food, and they aren't spending it on lottery tickets, alcohol, or whatever. And it might help stop the ducks from coming in. That's the only thing that I was thinking of. We're not going to be able to find people that don't have the money. It's going to be a tough law to enforce. But it gives our people a reason to not give money away. And then people will know that the town of Bennington does not support this.
Okay. Any other board members? John?
John, you know, as you know that I'm on the street every day. And anytime I, in the future that I see a panhandler, I'm going to think, I'm going to hear them quack. At any rate, you know, I've given this a great deal of thought as well. And I know that what prompted this were three primary offenders. And I've spoken to the police directly about these particular individuals. And they've committed various and sundry offenses, mostly primarily misdemeanors. And whenever they're hauled into court, the charges are dismissed because they're incompetent. So fundamentally, and I think that this may apply in large part to many of the people that panhandle that are begging, that they're incompetent. So that this therefore becomes virtually unenforceable. Because they can't pay the fine, number one. And if they're judged incompetent, it's wasted time and energy on the town's part. I am sympathetic to the business owners in this town. I am a business owner in this town. But I've found it very effective to tell them and tell them once, "No, go away. Don't come around here anymore." And it works. It works for me. Furthermore, for business owners that are having a problem, as the ordinance currently is written, I think it's effective. What needs to be done is for people to pick up the phone to the police department and say, "Look, I got a problem here." And have them shoo, shoo these people away. And finally, you know, I think this comes down to a measure of compassion for these unfortunate. I'll tell you a story from when I was a kid. Very, very little boy, five years old. And my mother was walking me downtown by the Marble Bank, which is now Fiddleheads. And there was a man sitting on the street. And he had a hat between his legs. And he was asking, and he had money in there. And I asked my mother if I could give him a penny. And years later, you know, we would talk about different things around the table. And my mother said, "You know, I didn't know what you would grow up to be. But I knew who you would grow up to be. I knew who you would grow up to be." So in a larger sense, I want to ask that of people of Bennington as well. I know what we want to be. But is this who we want to be? That's it. Thanks.
Okay, Sharon?
I will still support this. You know, Jim, you say, you know, just call the police. Well, this is going to give the police a little bit of teeth to be able to remove these people and, you know, make them go away. So I will continue to support this. That's all.
You know, I read through it again. I'm going to read one paragraph out of paragraph F. Intentionally or recklessly touching or causing physical contact with another person or person's property without the person's consent. They can touch me once. Touch me the second time, you're going to have to call the police. So how is your compassion going to be done then? And what are you going to say to me when I appear in front of court and said, "You didn't have anything to prohibit this in your beautiful town of downtown Bennington"?
Well, my response to you would be, Joe, if somebody is touching you, then I think that more closely constitutes assault.
I agree that it falls into another category like you had mentioned as well. And I think it's covered. But that being said, I don't disagree with what's written here.
Okay. Well, again, we're not going to vote on this tonight. We're going to bring it up again. John?
Just if I could take a sec to address what you said, John, about putting the onus on the person giving the money as opposed to the person asking for it. First of all, the theory behind like what your folks had said or whatever, there's nothing you can do to the ducks. They are not responsible for it. That the humans on the street are responsible for their actions. And the comments we get a lot, we are a tourist town and we're a college town. A lot of our tourists or senior population that gets easily intimidated, intimidated not just by panhandlers, but even youth on the street. And when they come into our office and complain, they're all shaken up that they were approached and for money and got stopped on the sidewalk. Almost all of them gave money. And I was like, "Well, why did you give them money?" They gave because they were afraid if they didn't, what would happen. So to then turn around and blame them for feeling like they were forced into doing it would even be worse when the person on the street's being rewarded over and over. So I just wanted to address that as we're looking forward. I understand the basis behind what you're saying. Unfair to the victim of...
Right. In no way was I trying to blame the people helping someone out or giving money out. What I was trying to do is give them a leg up so they can say, "Hey, it's illegal for me. I really, I really cannot do this. It's against the law."
And I agree with that. For us that know it's the law, but for a tourist or a college student...
Right. And I understand that. And then the second, the second part of that was that, I mean, the first part was to really give them that leg up to make sure they could
Yep.
not, not have to give the money. But if we're just taking the people off the street, the people that are asking for the money, we're not cutting the supply. And if there's a supply, someone's going to backfill. So we can keep taking people away. But if someone else will fill their spots. We've seen that time and time again in different arenas. So if we cut the supply, no more supply, no one's going to come eat. They'll go to a different beach.
Yep. And I'm sure it's opening up all sorts of other issues to maybe even write that in so that it does give all of us some meat where the police not only will have a leg to stand on, but we will too, saying, "I can't do it. It's illegal."
Right. Really, I'm just looking at a different solution, trying to find some, some other way of doing this because this might not be enough. It might not be easily enforced. And it might, just having the power to say, "Hey, it's legal,"
Yep.
might be enough.
Yep. It will bring issues legally. But with all the merchants on the street, the few folks, like Jim said, we can name them because it's not a widespread problem. They know it's not illegal. So we can shoo them all they want. They, they don't even listen to us. And if it became an ordinance where they weren't allowed to, at least the merchants could go out with that, saying, "Move along. This is illegal to be doing in Bennington." Or give them the courage or the impetus to call the police to come and do something about it.
Question for, I'm sorry, John. Do you want to?
No, I'm good. Thanks.
We, this, we currently do have a panhandling ordinance. This is just, these are amendments to what we currently have. Is that right?
Actually, no. No. We don't address soliciting...
This is nuisance.
Well, it comes under the improper use of public ways. Because it's, we are attempting to enforce this on the public property or in public spaces. So it's, it's not a panhandling ordinance per se. It's attempting to address what people call panhandling. It's solicitation without providing a service or property in return.
Okay.
And we've had legal counsel look at this and...
Yes.
Right.
They don't think there's a problem with the constitutionality.
You want to make another comment?
Okay.
Ronald Conroy? I would just like to repeat that peaceful solicitation of any kind, including panhandling, is a right afforded to all citizens by the First Amendment of the United States Constitution. At the beginning of this meeting, we all stood up and pledged allegiance to the flag. And now we're sitting down and discussing about taking away First Amendment rights. I think it's disgusting.
You think I'm disgusted after spending 28 years serving my country in my army?
I'm a disabled veteran. Desert storm.
So what are you, what are you trying to tell me?
I'm trying to say, you have no right to throw that army thing at me.
I'm telling you, don't tell me I'm doing something against the Constitution.
I fought for my Constitution.
Michael?
I think when you pass this thing, and I think it should be passed, and I don't know if it's constitutional or not. But I do know that the town has a right under zoning and everything else to put things into effect that protect the owners of the property and the businesses. And I suggest you do do this. But I also suggest you put up some signage. It doesn't have to be bold, big signage. But to let people know that this is an effect. There is no soliciting. Maybe businesses could put them in their window or you could put some on the post or whatever to let, so that a cop walks by and sees somebody doing it and say, "Hey, look at the sign. Did you read it?" The guy says, "Oh, yeah. Then move. Get out of here. Don't do it."
Okay.
It might simplify it. But whether it's constitutional or not, I, I think you do have as a right as a town under all the zoning things to do what you need to protect your merchants.
Okay, thank you, Michael. Okay, next item on the agenda is the net metering agreement Barney Road site. Dan, you talking to that?
I just want to introduce, before I get started, Derek Moretz. Is that incorrect, how you say your last name? And Derek's with Encore Redevelopment. He's the entity, he represents the entity that we've been working with all along. And I hope, and I'm, Joe, I know I sometimes have people have a hard time hearing me. So I'm going to, hopefully this works out. He represents the entity that we've been working with all along to come to an agreement on the solar facility at the Barney Road site. You recall in, when I last spoke to you about it, about this process, we've agreed upon a lease and net metering agreement whereby we would purchase credits for the electricity produced on the solar facility. The lease is a, that money will go into the general fund, if I'm correct, Stuart. And then the, whatever, whatever savings we get from the electricity credits will go into, will be credited to the water fund, water wastewater fund.
Wastewater treatment.
Wastewater treatment facility, yeah. So what we're, simply what we're asking for tonight is approval from the board to authorize the town managers to sign both the lease, the option agreement, the lease, and the net metering agreement to formalize our relationship with Encore Redevelopment regarding the construction of a solar facility on the Barney Road site, which is basically a piece of property between Barney Road and Route nine east. Encore still has to do their final due diligence. So it's not 100% that this property will work out. But they've already done quite a bit of due diligence. They feel pretty confident this site is going to work and that they can make a pretty good application to the Public Service Board, which is, which is the permitting organization that will review and hopefully approve this project. If you have any questions about how the solar facility might work or anything in general, Derek can certainly help answer those questions. And I can certainly try to answer any questions you might have about the, the deal going forward as well.
Okay. Any select board member?
No, it's pre-cut and dried. I moved that we authorize the town managers to sign the documents involved in the solar project.
Okay, a motion? And a second? Any discussion? All in favor? That's four in favor.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Next thing, we have a proclamation to read on recovery day. And I'm going to ask the vice chair to read that, please.
Whereas substance use disorders could affect any and all of us in all communities and with commitment and support, people can achieve healthy lifestyles and lead rewarding lives in recovery. And whereas through seeking help, those affected can embark on a new path toward improved health, overall wellness, making a healthier community in which to live. And whereas the focus of Recovery Day in Bennington is to celebrate the journey, many have entered in recovery, emphasizing that while the road to recovery may be difficult, the benefits of preventing and overcoming substance use disorders are significant and valuable to individuals, families, and communities. And whereas celebrating Recovery Day in Bennington spreads the message that behavioral health is an essential part of one's overall wellness and that prevention works, treatment is effective, and people do recover. And whereas in 2012, the Vermont Recovery Network had more than 155,000 visits to its centers in addition to many Vermonters who have already received care through any one of the treatment facilities in our state. And whereas by raising awareness through Recovery Day in Bennington, we are able to recognize the signs of mental and substance use disorders, celebrate the wonderful stories of success recovery in this great town, and honor those who chose recovery. Therefore, we, the Select Board, do hereby proclaim November 10, 2013, as Recovery Day in Bennington, Vermont, and encourage the citizens of Bennington to celebrate those in our community who have chosen to take the journey of recovery and support those in need of taking the first steps towards choosing a healthy life.
Okay. You've read your resolution. Do I have a motion? To accept?
I'll move, we accept.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? And that's three, four. Have we dated this yet?
November 11. No, no.
It's the week of November 10, right?
It's the week of November 10.
November 10 is the day, Joe.
It's the day.
I just wondered, can we keep this open for signatures of the other three board members?
Sure. We'll get your signatures tonight.
Get our signatures tonight. So we have a motion and approval, a vote of four present, three absent. And we'll try to get the other board members to act on that. Okay, the next item on the Agenda Managers Report. Stuart, we've already messed up your first one.
Well, I'm not sure. But I handed out before the meeting a piece. It's the colored document that you have before you. A great race, once again, has an opportunity to come through Bennington, not end in Bennington as it did several years ago. But it's a lunch stop. And what I'm here tonight to do is seek conditional approval from the board to become a sponsor. The sponsorship cost is $2,500. That would bring the race to Bennington. We are working with the Chamber and with the BBC group to determine if we can raise the funds to provide the lunch for all the participants. That's one of the requirements of being a sponsor. We had a meeting today, Mike Harrington, John Shanahan, and Joanna Herron House. And we've mutually agreed to try to push this forward. So I'm seeking what I'm calling conditional approval from this board to put forth the $2,500 as the sponsorship cost. The remaining money is to put on the lunch, to do whatever else we need to do to welcome the racers as they come through Bennington. I believe it's June 22, which is a Sunday, would be, come from local sponsorships, donations, and the like. So for us, the town of Bennington, it is a cost of $2,500 should we be able to pull this off. So the conditional approval would say that, yes, we would agree to do this if we can raise sufficient funds. Otherwise...
So the funds are going to come out of this year's budget where?
They would come out of the contingency at the end of the budget. There's a $10,000 contingency there. It so far has remained untouched.
Okay. Even though this event's not going to happen until the next fiscal year.
No, it'll happen in June.
No, it'll happen in June.
It'll happen at the end of fiscal year, won't it?
At the end of the fiscal year.
And it was a big success the last time. I know that this town was packed for a few days with these cars coming through.
It was fun.
Any board members want to make a motion on this?
I've just got a question here. Providing lunch, wouldn't it be a better idea if these guys were dining in our local restaurants?
Well, it's...
Pardon me?
Part of, part of, part of the effort that they, they are timed from location to location. So we have to create a venue where the organization, the race organizers, can set up timing tables and timing booths. They announce to drivers as they come in. They are spaced at least a minute apart. So you're not going to have them all in town at the same time. They each have an hour lunch break. So we're going to, we don't know how it will work yet. We don't know what the venue will be. But we're trying to find a place that would be in the downtown, central, and Bennington. We've talked about a variety of ways to feed them and haven't come to any conclusions yet. But that is one opportunity. But the idea would be that you would move these people through the community on a continuing basis, arriving every minute or two apart. They would stop, have lunch. So they would be there an hour. Another group would be an hour, and so on and so forth. The process would probably take a couple hours to complete. And then they'd be on their way.
And Stu, either way, we have to buy them lunch.
Right. I understand that. But if you spread, you know, spread the wealth is my point.
Well, maybe our local establishment is...
Well, maybe our local establishments might like to also offer up the food, and then someone, it'll become a staple. Anytime someone drives by Vermont, "Hey, we got to go stop, wherever," and grab a burger or something, or a hot dog.
I couldn't agree with more.
But the reason I'm asking tonight, and it's kind of in a rush, is that the Great Race officials need to know whether or not Bennington is at least conditionally committed to being a sponsor, because that puts us on the, on the map. Otherwise, the race will move down the coast, and it won't come through Bennington.
I move that we be conditionally committed to becoming a sponsor for this event.
Do you have a motion?
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor? And that's four for it, three missing.
Thank you very much.
Motion passed. Next item, Stuart?
I don't have another action item tonight, I don't believe. I did talk a little bit about the fact that we are close to successful financing options, which will keep our costs on an annual basis over a 15-year period under $50,000 a year for the rescue pumper truck. So, that's a good thing. And you have in your plan, in your packet, I'm saying, I'm sorry, the Northside Drive corridor plan, we'll put that on a subsequent agenda.
Right.
It was requested by a board member.
Right.
We wanted you folks to have it so you could review it, and
Okay.
We'll talk about it perhaps on the 11th of November, and I think that's all I have. I do, Joe, require a short, brief executive session for a legal
Right.
Question, and that's it.
Okay. John, any other business?
No.
Jim?
Yes. The New Dollar General store has been a big topic, probably more than any other topic since I've been elected, and the concern over the current state of construction. And I asked Stu and Mike Harrington to post a picture that the planning commission approved of the building in it. You know, it's not the Taj Mahal, but it's an attractive addition to the downtown. And the other thing is, you know, the amount of complaints about another dollar store in Bennington. Well, what I said to others, I said on Facebook, and I'll say it here as well, to, and that I've said to customers and people that I've inquired, you know, we cannot of one side of our mouths complain that there's not enough business coming into town, and then when a new business does come to town, bemoan the fact that it's not exactly the right one. But it is a new business, it's, it's an attractive part of our downtown, and I just wanted to address that. Thanks.
And it does occupy a lot, it's been vacant for how many years? An ugly lot. It does meet the downtown district design standards, it was approved by the DRB, and I don't recall if we know, what is the grand, grand list value of that building?
We don't yet. I can't remember what the estimated cost of construction is. Dan, maybe you can.
I don't recall the estimated cost of construction. It is a 9,000 square foot building, so it's a significant
So, it's probably over a million bucks?
Can the audience make a comment?
Go ahead, Mike.
The only thing I, I was talking to Jimmy the other day, last night about it, is on the design review part of this, do we have to make it, I know it's in the bylaws or whatever you call it, a two-story building, but on the perimeter of our town, do we really want two-story buildings mandated to be built? And I can understand in the center where you've got the Harp Theater Lot, or if another building want to be razed and built back up, but I think we're going into an area where it's not even a real true story, two-story building, I don't believe. Is it, Dan? Is it second story, that it'll be functional?
Oh, it's two stories in height.
It's two stories in height. I think we ought to, as a, as a board, you guys ought to ask them to review that, because that's what I'm hearing most of the complaints on, is it blocking the motel, it's taking the view, a little bit of the church, and stuff like that. And if it's on the perimeter of our downtown, I think we ought to look at that and make it discretionary maybe, if you can, of the DRB, or ask if a new builder wanted to have a variance because they really don't need the two stories. Because right now, the way it reads, if somebody, I'll just use an analogy, if somebody wanted to buy up Alcarls, or buy up the Sunny Side and Alcarls and put something up, and they wanted to put something in there, even if they could or couldn't, do we really want the downtown to be blocked in by two-story buildings that aren't really necessary? And the brick building, you know, it's nice, but could that not have been a lighter color material used for siding that might have blended in better with that, that area? That's all I'm asking. But I agree with Jim on it, on the, you know, it's a dollar store, but hey, but I think that DRB ought to be able to look at that.
Well, something the planning commission ought to look at when they look at the downtown design district again. I think maybe, I'm not sure what the intent was, is so that as we come into our towns, we don't give the impression of strip malls, as it, as they enter the town of Bennington with one-story buildings and their things.
I don't like the Great Wall of China.
Point well taken, Mike. Anything else? Sharon?
No, nothing.
Okay, we do have other business to go, an executive session, legal, and has to do with a contract with Southern Vermont College, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I need a motion to go to executive session?
I'll move.
And do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you.